Good night. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item is Ken Rocket and the Casino Free Milford. And from what I understand through Ken, I think John Seaver and Steve Tredle are going to be making a presentation, is that right, John?
Yes.
Okay. And as you're aware, I was at one of your meetings. Are you ready, John?
I'm ready, Chairman.
Okay. I was at one of your meetings and heard the information, found it interesting, and it was I that approached Ken Rocket and invited your organization to this meeting. So we're very happy here to hear whatever information you can present. This is not a public hearing, as you know, there is no proposal before the town. This is simply information gathering for our board because we need to get as much information as we can. Okay, so with that, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you again, and Selectman Buckley and Selectman DeBartle Mas, and of course, a congratulations to Town Administrator Solazi. Good luck in your retirement. As you know, I'm John Seaver, a lifelong Milford resident, and my co-presenter tonight is Steve Tredle, who's also a lifelong Miss Milford resident. We're the co-chairs of the, this organization of concerned Milford individuals and people from the, from the area who are very concerned with the placement of, you know, of the casino here, here in Milford. You know, I'll give a quick overview of where we are, and then Steve will add some additional comments. As you know, there's, the state has set up a two-phased process. We're in the middle of Phase One, where a background check and other kinds of background information is being gathered, and if the applicant passes that, we move quickly to Phase Two. Phase Two, we suspect will happen sometime in the May-June timeframe, and the purpose of Phase Two is the creation of a host agreement, which is really a contract between the town of Milford and the casino developer. And the core of that agreement would be identifying areas where, of mitigation, where we, where, you know, how the casino would be impacting the town of Milford, and what are some recommendations and things that would be needed. And once that host agreement is signed and agreed to, that becomes the basis of the popular referendum vote, which we anticipate to happen sometime in late fall, early, early winter. And then if that is, if there's a no vote on that, at that point, the whole thing dies. If there's a yes vote, it goes to town meeting, and then ultimately to the State Gaming Commission, who has indicated they want to make the decisions on these licenses by February of 2014. So we're sort of backing from that, backing in our estimates from, from that date. But Steve, you want to take over from there?
Sure. Should I?
Sure, that's fine.
How do we feel comfortable, Steve?
Everyone can hear you all back.
What do you like?
This is only for TV, right?
That's for TV, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay. So anyway, tonight's presentation is only a summary and highlights that John and I are going to do of what our Casino Free Milford movement has researched on how this proposed development will impact our community. We have given you several packages here of more complete information. One of them is the presentation that John and I are giving, which is kind of like an executive summary. That would be the overheads.
Okay.
And then the bound, the wire-bound thing is the presentation John and I are doing.
Okay.
And the other report is basically the research that our group has done so far that will contain all the references to studies and so forth that back up what we're saying. So we're going to keep it just as statements, and all the backup is in that report.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So, we want to emphasize that Casino Free Milford is not opposed to gambling. That's a personal choice. And we're not anti-casino proponents, as we've been labeled. Our information that we're going to give you tonight and in those reports is, is not speculation or soundbites. It's based on sound research of community impact studies and data from towns similar to Milford who are now living with the decision to host a casino. We've concluded, basically, through our preliminary studies here, that Milford is not an appropriate location for a destination casino complex. And we are here to present that information to you tonight.
Thanks, Steve. So the first item that we wanted to go through, we have 12 different items, so we'll move quickly, is the actual sighting of where the casino is proposed to be. And to a great extent, it's in a residential area, and we have found no other casinos in the United States that have been placed in a suburban residential kind of situation that's being proposed here. There's 42 single-family homes and 45 casinos within one-third of a mile of the condominiums. You know, both of those together worth about $35 million in appraised value. Those individuals would be directly impacted through traffic and noise and all kinds of things. We have found no other casinos in the United States that have been put in a residential area such as that.
Okay, we're going to talk, start talking about infrastructure now. We'll start with water. Similar-sized casino developments around the country use somewhere between 500,000 to 750,000 gallons per day.
Okay, all right.
Need to go on more, John, sorry.
Yeah, Steve, I was just going to ask you a little, for the people at home.
We're forgetting to click ahead here, sorry.
That's okay, take your time.
So, the, the project which the water company currently has underway is to address water quality, not water quantity, okay? And so the current situation with quantity is that most of Milford's water supply is surface water from Echo Lake and the watershed that supports, that feeds that lake. The Echo Lake watershed is limited in the quantity of water it can provide, and the town is fast approaching that limit. It has to impose water bans during periods of low rainfall. Now, the water company has had to supplement with some wells, but we have limited aquifers in this town that we can put, put into service. So now, you add the casino demand, and let's first start off by pointing out that the water company, as you know, is private and under, it's under state regulation, but it's out of Milford's control. So as a private enterprise, they'll be motivated, you know, as a business, to sell water to such a large development. They're a business, and we don't question that. The only source of water, new water, is wells. Years to permit and install, and no guarantee that we'll find enough water to meet that new demand, and high costs to operate and maintain. The existing water quality plant that's under construction right now will also have to be expanded. Milford taxpayers would be faced with having to pay forever through their rates and their water bills for the expanded infrastructure and the operating costs. So the bottom line is, if this proposal moves forward, the developer must pay for all water supply, infrastructure expansion, and operating costs, because his delta of use is what's causing that to have to be, happen, and we think this should be non-negotiable in the, in the agreement. Sewer, without getting into, you know, the numerous infrastructure details, a similar scenario applies to our sewer treatment plant and sewer pipe, piping system, you know? John Minetti, Director of Operations there at the, at the plant, ballpox, something, something between 18 and 23 million dollars in upgrades and operating costs is projected over the next 20 years, and he's budgeting for it and working at that. If the casino proposal is implemented, all of this has to happen now. All of this has to happen now. So bottom line again, developer must be required to pay for all sewer upgrade, and that again should be non-negotiable. John?
Okay. The next topic is the effect of casinos on crime, and there is a direct positive correlation between casinos coming to town and a rise in crime. The U.S. News and World Report did a, a study a couple of years ago, and they found that casino communities have an 84% higher rate of crime than the national average. And so, also, I wanted to add that the Foxwoods Casino in Connecticut, which is a full-scale casino, similar to what is being proposed here, they have 55,000 daily visitors on the weekends and 40,000 daily visitors during the week. That's the kind of traffic and population that, you know, in that range that we may be having to deal with. So that's going to seriously impact our traffic, but particularly our crime. We found that 30% of all DUI traffic stops in the state of Connecticut occur within 10 miles of the casinos. And we found that the violent and property crime rates in the neighboring casino towns increased 30% five years after the casinos opened. You know, some crimes that had appreciable increases were embezzlement, drug violations and DUI. DUI arrests have more than doubled since 1992 when the casino, when Foxwoods opened, and roughly 20% of the motorists in Monville, Leggard, and North Stonington arrested for DUI acknowledged to police that their last drink was at a casino. So there'll be, there'll be a huge increased burden on the Milford Police Department to deal with the, the new crime that would occur here. Steve?
If I could just stop you one second, John, and you have the backup for all of this information?
Quiet! Yes.
In this document?
Yes, we, yeah, this is, as Steve, as Steve said, this is the executive summary. We have all the different source documents identified.
Brian, this is one of the backups here. Okay, is it, is that in?
Yeah.
Is that in this one? No. I'm just trying to get situat-- okay.
Yeah. Brian, as you can--
That's in the overhead, Brian.
Right. As you can see, right here, Brian, police calls in Norwich, Connecticut, which is adjacent to the casino town, it's where the casino workers live, and it's got the demographics like Milford. It's, and we compared it to Glastonbury, which is not within the casino area. And it's, you know, so they're semi-similar towns. You can see, police calls are three times as much, emergency calls, two and, two and three times as much, and so forth. It's much greater in the town of Norwich, which is, which is right next, two miles from, from Foxwoods.
That might be of interest to the police chief here.
Yeah. Let's move on, Steve.
A key element, and part of this proposal by the proponent, is that we're going to have isolated access to the site from Interstate 495. That's really an essential part of the proposal, the addition of another interchange on 495 between 85 and 109. And while this is one of the main features of the project highlighted by the developer, we suggest that you don't drink the Kool-Aid just yet, because this seems improbable because of the Federal Highway Administration rules about interchanges for the interstate highway system. To summarize these rules, all new interchanges must provide access in both directions. And to construct that, you need land on both sides of 495. The developer does not control the needed land on the west side of 495, because that's where Target, Toyota, Best Buy, and a hotel are. There's not room to construct that, on-off ramp going south, on-off ramp going north. Going north, they can do it. Going south is problematic.
Well, it would be impossible, wouldn't it, Steve?
Just vote, unless Target wants to sell out.
Because if you're going southbound, you'd have to do what? Did you have to be an exit coming?
You have to do a flyover.
Over the, over the, over the northbound, right?
It's a bridge that would be built over the, over the northbound.
Similar to Simarano Drive.
Very similar to Simarano Drive.
Okay.
Yeah, just like that. That would be the requirement there.
Okay.
And you need land on the other side to be able to do that.
So even to do the flyover, he would need to have land on, on, would be the western side of 495?
On the western side of 495, yeah. He's got land over, on this side.
Okay.
But he doesn't have land on the other side. So that's, that's problematic. Access off an interstate must be to a public road. It can't be to a private drive or a private facility. And the third is, the minimum spaces between interchanges is one mile. There's less than two miles between 85 and 109, so that would require a variance. And I can tell you from experience, I think you know that I'm a civil engineer, huh? Federal highway officials rarely grant these kind of variance because it would set a precedent and a whole cascade of requests from all over the country to do this. That's problematic. If somehow an on-and-off ramp variance were granted, permitting, if this was publicly funded, permitting and construction times would be measured in decades. And I say that with conviction because there's a similar thing going on up in Lowell, where they are adding an interchange to 495 or want to, and supported by the, by the businesses in the area, it's supported by local politicians, it's supported by the representatives and senators at Congress. It's been in the works for 10 years, and there's no funding in sight, and it's still in preliminary design. So, bottom line is, the important thing here is, do not accept a proposal promising dedicated access from 495 unless the entire highway project is funded by the developer, number one. And number two, developer has complete construction documents that would be approved by Federal Highway and Mass DOT. Don't do it on a promise, because he can't guarantee approval of the interchange. So somehow that's going to be worked into the agreement. Then, if there's a fallback, you know, local roads, local road access to the casino would be a disaster, even no matter how much they rebuild them, because, in my opinion, the casino should not be allowed to open until 495 access is constructed. If you look at local access, 16 and 85 are now carrying twice the traffic they were designed to carry, and you know that from personal experience, I'm sure. Imagine what it would be like for our residents on the east side of town. Imagine what that, how that would impede traffic flow to our industrial areas like EMC and Waters on Bear Hill and the businesses on Fortune Boulevard. So, and then finally, who's going to pay for the wear and tear on local roads? Because, you know, people from surrounding communities going to the casino will use local roads and aren't going on 495. And that amount of traffic, we're talking, John, you talked about what, 40,000 visitors a day? Our population is what, 28,000?
28,000, yeah.
Yeah, so we're doubling the size of the residents of Milford every day going to that, using the local roads. So we say, local roads should not be an option in any way except for emergency vehicles. John?
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Moving quickly here, the next topic is the effect of the casino on fire and EMS services in town. And as we previously said, Norwich, Connecticut is a good demographic comparison for Milford. It's where the, the bulk of the casino workers live. And as you can see, Norwich, Connecticut, the casino-related EMS call volume has, range has risen two to, between 2,000 and 3,000 calls per year above what it was prior to the casino. Now, many towns in Connecticut surrounding the, the casino complain of high 911 call volume. And the other issue is, our concern is, the direct route from where the casino is proposed and the, and the Milford Hospital is right through the most congested road in, in Milford, right up Route 16 and so forth. So that's yet another problem. As you can see from this chart here comparing Glastonbury, which is the non-casino town, and Norwich, go to the bottom one, 5,600 emergency calls in Norwich and only 1,867 in Glastonbury. Quite a huge difference. Steve?
If I could just ask you something, John?
Yeah.
Because what is, I'm looking at this paperwork here that you have, and you're comparing Norwich to Milford, and over here you've got the 911 calls of Norwich, 23,000. Is that?
Where is that, Brian?
That's on, on this, in this package here, on the fire and emergency. We have Milford, this is charted out the year 2011, 911 calls for Milford is roughly 6,400, and then in 2011, 911 call volume for Norwich was 23,000.
Yeah.
So that's almost four times as much, but I'm not sure, is that a different year or something?
It is, it's 2007 to 2008.
Yeah, it's a different year, and of course Norwich is, you know, 41,000, Milford's only 27,000, 28,000, so that it's a, it's a, you know, it's not a direct comparison.
A little bit bigger, but--
Yeah, it's a little bit bigger, but--
All right.
Okay, Steve.
Thank you.
Jobs.
Jobs. Casino will bring us lots of jobs. It's true, there's lots of employees, there's it in the thousands in the casino. Sounds great. It's what I hear a lot when folks are casually talking about the casino development. I never hear, though, of what kinds of casino jobs. How about over 80%, and this comes right off of Foxwoods roster of personnel now and jobs, 80% of casino jobs in our research pay less than 26,000 a year, in many cases for a 12-hour shift. So basically, that's minimum wage and dead-end jobs. For comparison, Milford's median, median family income right now is, is, is reported by the Bureau of Labor Statistics as 81,000 a year. So that would not be the kind of jobs that I think would be terribly attractive to our citizens. Nonetheless, you know, Foxborough has thousands of people holding these low-paying jobs, so how do, how do they find the workers? They import them. There are plenty of people from depressed areas of our country and third-world countries who would love to earn minimum wage. Where are they going to live? Where will they go to school? Get health care? Those issues are going to be addressed by John in a couple of minutes. So what will a casino do for unemployment? Again, we're using Norwich, Connecticut, to compare to Milford. And we pick Norwich, of course, because it's one of the adjacent communities to the, to the Foxwoods Casino. Now, this, this graph is by U.S. Department of Labor Statistics, and it measures unemployment rate. And all the way back to 2001, it was hovering at all three, around 5%. Then, of course, in 2008, 2009, we had the major recession and a big jump of unemployment. And pretty similar here, except for Milford. Now, notice Milford is like around 8%, where the United States as a whole and Norwich, Connecticut is up around 9 and 10%. So what happens in 2010 when we started a recovery is what unemployment happened in Milford, okay? And it dropped down to 5% by last December. Look what happens in the United States. It sort of drops down to seven and a half, eight percent. Norwich stays up at 9 and 10%. And yet, they have a casino, and we don't. Okay? So, effect on unemployment, I think that, that chart describes that it has little effect because the jobs are not going to the local citizens. Housing and schools, John?
Okay. So the next thing that we wanted to look at was the effect of the casino on our local housing market and our schools. And we, we believe that the casino's workers moving into town will put a significant pressure on the local housing market. For instance, in Norwich, Connecticut, zoning complaints increased from 137 to 503 from 2002 to 2006. And Norwich city officials attributed most of these increases to illegal rooming home conversions. And what that means is, there's a sharing of beds in shifts known as hotbedding, which is a very common practice among casino workers who earn low wages. And remember, 80% of the workers at the casino are low-wage. One shift of workers returns to home, only to be replaced at the casino by another. So this term, hotbedding, denotes the bed is, is always warm. And we know that the town of Milford has had good results with dealing with the overcrowding in our, you know, in our housing and our multifamily housing, but this casino will set those, you know, successes back and will present, you know, a problem for the staff and so forth. So there would be a need for additional staffing and other requirements. The effect on the, on schools is obviously, you know, related to housing in that, well, let me give you a quote from Elaine Bono, who's a long-term planning commission member from Leggard. She said, "I witnessed firsthand how casinos take business away from local businesses. So many employees had to be brought into the area to support the casino, along with their families, that there was a crunch on the affordable housing market." Overcrowding in our local schools, and of course, that put a strain on the local school budget. The town of Norwich, which is right next door, and we've talked about it, it went from 40 English-as-a-second language students to 400 in a span of 10 years. Imagine what the cost of that would be to Milford. And finally, as a Norwich City Councilor candidate recently said, "Our school system is heavily impacted by the transient population shifts caused by our proximity to the casinos. Student turnover last year in K through 8 was the equivalent of six full classes." Steve?
Environmental considerations. There's a number of environmental issues associated, obviously, with a project of this magnitude that will radically change the suburban nature of our town, specifically overwhelming our drinking water supply and wastewater treatment systems, trash generated by this mega facility, air pollution from traffic, loss of the only remaining undeveloped forested area in our town, including endangered species habitat, and the density of population will skyrocket, as John just described. Now, some of these issues are covered in, in other areas of our presentation, so we're not going to dwell on those again. But the big question is, why would we ever want to give up the semi-rural suburban environment of our town to create the inconvenience, the monetary cost, crime, overcrowding, unhealthiness, and just plain ugliness of a big city environment? Because that's what is going to happen to our environment. You know, why did our newer citizens-- And we're not talking about, you know, Milford townies being retro here. You know, why did our new citizens move into town? Could it be that they didn't want to have to deal with all of these big city issues, and this was the town that they chose to live in? And we're risking, in no uncertain terms, changing that environment. John?
Thanks, Steve. Okay. There's no slide. The next thing is the effect of casinos on our residential property values. And what statistics generally show is that the lower-end rental market will benefit from a casino. And of course, this is due to the influx of low-end, unskilled labor moving into Milford and the surrounding towns. But the higher end of the housing market will likely see a negative impact, and this is due to the increased traffic, crime, and the negative impacts to the schools. And so that's more where, where Milford is. The first, with the lower end, that would work for perhaps Worcester or Lawrence, but most, you know, the, the high-end homes would, would be, you know, significantly impacted in Milford. The impact, the traffic increases had on home values in Preston, Connecticut is a, is a good example. Preston, again, is adjacent to the casinos, to one of the casinos in Connecticut, and a recent revaluation of properties in Preston shows that home values of properties within a quarter of a mile of the casino are as much as 20% lower than a similar home, you know, further away from the casino. And this has, has had a huge, this is a huge financial impact on those residents. Steve?
Okay. Community economic expansion. Community economic expansion. We're told that the development will spin off economic growth in Milford. A study from UMass focused on local economic growth from casino, from casino development, and it concluded, and I'm going to quote some, some items from that study, "Towns will not experience spillover economic growth stimulated by a community, by a, by a casino, because casinos are unique compared to other types of destination tourism, because all of the ancillary spending, food, entertainment, shopping, hotels, occurs inside the casino complex. Profits are retained by casino operators and shipped out of town, out of state, and sometimes out of country to the investors. Casino workers in those minimum-wage jobs John just spoke about don't spend in the local community. Typically, they send large portions of their earnings out of country through remittance rather than buy services from the community." Ledgend, Connecticut, has lived through this experience. You know, the Ledgend Town Planner backed up this study in a telephone interview, and he said, "The only economic growth the Ledgend community has seen spinning off from the casino development is a new Dunkin' Donuts in a hotel built and owned by the casino. Everything casino customers need is internal. There's no need for off-site business expansion." That's a direct quote from somebody that's lived at, the Town Planner. In fact, quite the opposite is true. What do you think is going to happen to our local community restaurants and hotels and entertainment business? 89, 45, all Prestos, you know? What's going to happen to those, to those businesses? Their businesses, business is going to drain to the casino complex, and they will be devastated, and some will end up closing. In that effect of, of the casino in our midst, more transfer of money out of our community, loss of a diversified, stable base of community-based businesses who have a personal stake and live in town, and further dependency on the revenue from the casino. This kind of like picture, a giant vacuum cleaner with a large sucking sound, taking money and local community jobs out of Milford, lost forever. A little bit about social costs. Our tradition in Milford has been based on traditional values, which promote close-knit extended families, celebrations of our immigrant cultural background, and a close-knit sense of community. In our little town, we have two Catholic parishes, a Jewish temple, traditional Protestant churches, and numerous neighborhood places of worship. Allowing a large community development into our town with the crime, gambling addiction, drugs and prostitution, and influx of temporary workers that inevitably comes with this kind of development would, over the long run, erode our traditional values as a community. And what's the upside for our quality of life if we go with this? The literature identifies that the, the clearest social cost of a casino development in a community is the increase in addictive gambling that results. Study by community research partners on the social impact of casinos estimates that 1.2 percent of all adults, all adults in the United States, imagine what that number is, are pathological gamblers. Another 1.5 percent are problem gamblers. And that's like 3 percent of our entire adult population. Why should we care? Because those addictions lead to real costs that directly affect all of us: job losses, unemployment, welfare benefits, gambling, disorder treatments, bankruptcies, divorces, imprisonment, and legal aid costs. Hit us right in the pocketbook. The likelihood of becoming a pathological or problem gambler, by the way, is double for a person living within 50 miles of a casino. Okay, John?
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so the, before we sum up, the final topic is municipal planning requirements. I mean, I think it's clear that consideration of this casino is going to require a top-to-bottom review of the long-term capital needs and requirements of the town. I mean, additional infrastructure, structure burden to the police, fire, schools, DPW, I mean, you name it, all of those departments are going to have to be reviewed for both buildings, manpower, equipment needs, and so forth. So that's, that's one thing. And then, of course, the, you know, every view of the, you know, the zoning bylaws that we have on the books to make sure that everything is up to speed for this unique kind of proposal that we're dealing with. And any planning and zoning bylaws as well may need to be modified to keep other undesirable type of businesses out of our community. Steve's going to do a conclusion.
So I implore you here, what we just presented, although you may have experienced it as long and tedious, is only an, an executive summary of the impacts the proposed community development would bring down on our community. We have left you each with a copy of, of this summary presentation and a draft of that report our movement has developed, complete with references and data to support the statements that we made tonight. When we first got into this, we had no idea of the issues that Milford would have to deal with if this development were accepted. In fact, I was only remotely interested because I thought it would be physically isolated, would bring in tax revenue, and not affect me as a Milford resident. As we got into the research, I began to realize how much this would significantly affect me and every Milford resident. It will forever change the character of our community. It will cost us dearly in social impact and increased infrastructure costs that John just described. It'll destroy local businesses and take money out of our community. And that's not speculation. That's what happened in other host communities. And to back that up, we recommend that you take a look at the video on our website and hear the direct testimony of people in communities now hosting casinos who wish they, when they knew how hosting a casino would really change their environment, their pocketbooks, and their way of life. And that's why John and I are here tonight, and all these folks are here tonight. And that's why hundreds of volunteers in, in growing have developed this information for your youth and our citizens' education. Casino No, Milford, again, is not a protest group. We're not opposed to the idea of anybody gambling and having fun at a casino. There'll be three casinos in the state within easy reach of Milford residents. We simply don't want to see this, see our community devastated by the presence of a community development with all of its baggage in our hometown. You, as a board of selectmen, could choose to shut this down right now by refusing to continue discussion. We, we simply ask tonight that you seriously consider that option. Should you decide to proceed with negotiations, we offer you the group's assistance and resources, and we have plenty. We've got very competent and skilled people on our communities, and we would like to offer that service to you as you deliberate. Thank you.
Thanks, John. John, how, how big is Ledgend, population-wise?
It's, I'd be 13,000 or 14,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Norwich is the surrounding community?
Yes, right, adjacent to Ledgend is Norwich. That's where they all live.
Okay, Ledgend is the one that actually houses the?
Yes. Ledgend is, you know, but it's very rural, you know, where these, where Foxwoods was built, it was very rural, on, you know, farm roads and so forth, so.
And, and where's the Mohegan Sun located?
What town is Mohegan?
I don't know. Anybody know?
Uncersville.
Okay. All right. No, a very good presentation. I mean, all of these issues that you talk about are real issues, obviously, need to be examined thoroughly. There's a lot of good work that your committee has done, and that's why I invited you here, so that we could have this forum, we could get this discussion started, and that this board and the town can get fully informed if and when a proposal comes forward. But with that, let me turn it over to my colleagues.
Yeah, no question. Nice, very detailed presentation, and I think, you know, it shows all the people what their concerns. And I think the chairman, from the very beginning, has laid out a plan on how this should be looked at. I think, as a selectman, I have a responsibility to the people who don't want it, want it, and then there are certain, you know, there's a good percentage of people who are saying, "Provide us the information," like we've always done. John, when you were on the Board of Selectmen, we listened to people, we tried to obtain all the information, and then at the end of the day, we took a vote. And I think what's nice about this situation is that all the people of Milford will be able to vote if it goes forward. We don't, we haven't received, we don't have a proposal in front of us, so we can't tell you anything about what's happening. But I think this one person, you know, we did a couple, a week, a couple of weeks ago, we voted to hire a legal firm to assist the town when we received the proposal. I think this information, I liken this to the, at one time, we had the, the power plant. And back then, it was a lot of the same concerns about cancer, EMFs, traffic, all those things. We worked very closely with the groups. Matter of fact, you make us work harder, and I think that's good, to make, to make sure we have all the facts. And the only thing I say is that I think we have to see what happens. We'll use this information, we'll call you, we have the spokesperson's here now, and, you know, whatever has to be done, because I think we all, we all feel that Milford's a special place. And I don't think we're going to allow anything to happen to the town of Milford that would not be in the, that would not be in the best interest of everyone. So those are my feelings, and, and once again, you know, the research, you're a serious group, you've gotten the information, and as we go forward, if we do go forward, we're certainly going to have many, many discussions, and we'll be working together, exchanging ideas, information. It'll be a total open process. And the only thing I want, if it does go forward, that the people of Milford, when they vote, they'll be informed, and they know about all these issues. A lot of these issues we've already talked about somewhat, but a lot of other issues that you brought out, you know, those are, those are new concerns, so they have to definitely be dealt into by, by engineers, by scientists, by environmental people, and to make sure that we have all the information for the residents. So I commend you for coming in, I thank you, and I'm sure that we will be working very closely. As Brian said, though, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, so we have to wait and see what happens.
We're going to vote, and let's see what the reelection looks like next time you're running. Excuse me, sir.
Easy.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. We've been very respectful, we're here to get information, okay? We, we have a responsibility to find out as much information as this proposal that we can. So I'm sorry, you know, if I don't know as much as you, but I'm willing to try to learn, and I'm open-minded to this. So I would just ask for the same respect that we accorded you. Bill?
No, I just want to say one more thing.
Go ahead.
I think the caliber of presentation and the integrity that the presenters have made is a lot. I mean, that goes a lot, okay, and it means a lot. And I think that's what we need. Steve, when you, when you first came in, Steve, we talked briefly, and you said, "Hey, we have to work together, whatever the case may be." And I think those are the types of things that we have to continue to do. John, we served on the Board of Selectmen many times, we had many discussions about many difficult issues. And I remember you always said, "Hey, you know, let's get all the information, put everything out on the table, and then we'll see what happens." So I think those types of things are advantageous, I think that'll go a long way, that's progressive. But I think comments like this gentleman just made, I think serves no purpose, and I think it'll hurt your cause. So let's do it above, you know, let's do it above board, put all the information on the, on the table, and then see what happens. But I commend you once again for the presentation, and also for the people for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve, John, do you have the names of the folks that attended this evening that are from the community?
Yeah, we've, we had sign-in sheets, we can, we can provide that to you.
All right, that's, that's something that'd be helpful to me.
I didn't sign. A lot of us didn't.
All right, so for those people that didn't sign it, it would be helpful to get a copy of the board, because, you know, part of what I'm looking to understand is which, which of those residents we represent. I have from emails, different people that have contacted me, and I know the other members have been contacted. And so it's just important that, that we differentiate those that are interested in influencing the community from outside of the community, and those that are influencing the community from inside the community. It's important to me, because those are the people I represent, I've been elected to represent, and I want to make that distinction.
We'll make that available to you.
Okay, that would be helpful. You know, I, I have to agree with the speakers, the, the board members, my fellow board members, in the, in saying that your presentation was very well-done, appreciate the time that it took, what I'm guessing is an awful lot of man-hours to put that together. So I appreciate that from, from this committee, and to the two presenters who did an outstanding job this evening. Thank you for the, the approach that you're taking, because it's helpful that we keep up adult dialogue in a respectful manner. It's important, as Dino said, to the cause, that you not lose sight of that. But it was all of those things that you mentioned that's helped me understand and, and helped me form an opinion that says that with respect to our quality of life in Milford, casino is not something I support. So with, and I say that not because I need to understand whether it's six stories or four, whether it's 800 rooms or 300 rooms, or whether it's five restaurants or three. It is those things that you mentioned with respect to its location, the, the promises of 495 interchange that I don't believe, and the impacts associated with traffic and water specifically. There are others, sewer, even if they were to build their own waste treatment facility that is on our recharge area. So I have an awful lot of concerns that I don't think, you know, to answer a question, you, you asked a rhetorical question, but I'll answer it. Why would we do it? The only reason that I've seen that communities reach out to casinos is about money. And so the question becomes, to what extent is our quality of life for sale? And there are things, there are things that you mentioned with regard to water supply that you can't sell what you don't have. And specifically, when I look at east-west traffic, and specifically Route 16 from the hospital to Route 109, and that area that's already taking 40 minutes on a Saturday to get through, when I look at pinch points such as the Dill street intersection at Cedar Street, and when I look at Cedar Street and Main Street, I don't see an awful, what, what money is going to do there unless we're thinking about buying Olivas and all the businesses on either side of Main Street to open that up. And I guess the Olivas have something to say about that. But that, all that said, that is an area that, when you look at traffic studies, that is, is part of what's driving our congestion. There's not a lot that can be done. I know the chief and I have had several discussions about that particular interchange and the need to let people out of, what is that, Middleton Street? And what it's doing to the rest of the town in terms of traffic, some portion of this traffic, regardless of its size, is going to have to come through that intersection. Whether they're coming from Douglas, they're coming from Uxbridge, they're coming from, you know, Mendon, wherever. North-south interchange on 495 can only handle so much, but the east-west thing, I just don't see an opportunity to mitigate. But it's for those reasons that I'm concerned about the quality of life, and I don't think that money is the solution here. So I appreciate your, your comments, appreciate your presentation. For my part, as this goes forward, the, the only thing I can commit to the community and the residents is I'll do the best I can through this process for, in a couple of areas. And that's one, to make sure that the relationship remains at arm's length. I was compelled by the presentation that was made in the video that I did watch. When you talked about people making comments about the impact, those were former elected and currently elected town officials. So those weren't residents who felt... So those weren't residents who felt inconvenience, but those were people that were hearing from their constituents about the problems it created. And I got the sense in that presentation, that video, that some of them wished they knew now, or wished they knew then what they know now. So I appreciate all the information that's being provided. As Dino said, it's critically important that people speak out in these ways. I appreciate Brian reaching out to this committee and inviting your group to present. You know, and I apologize to the people who couldn't be in the room, because I think they would have seen a presentation that they could be proud of. So thank you.
Let me just add that I have a deep amount of respect for Steve and John's viewpoint on this particular project and how it's evolved. And particularly, Steve, in your conclusion, when you talked about you were initially remotely interested, but as you delved into the issue more and got more information, you were able to make an informed decision. That's the responsibility that we have for this town. And as John had indicated, the state set up a process that ultimately may call for a town-wide vote. That is something that we need to respect and treat with very responsible care. And to me, that means gathering as much information as we can to decide if it's worthwhile to go forward with a town-wide vote. You've correctly cited many of the issues that we believe to be there. Obviously, the on-ramp, off-ramp from 495 could be a showstopper. Environmental issues, water, sewage, those types of things, even before you get into the societal costs in the community. So what I want you to understand is that we, as members of the Board of Selectmen, are trying to gather as much information on those issues as we can so that going forward, we can feel comfortable talking to the townspeople that we're making a responsible decision one way or the other. So we obviously have an identification of the issues from your presentation. And again, if a proposal does come forward, those are the types of issues that we need to see how they're going to be addressed or not addressed. And that will really dictate the process from there. But I know you wanted to say something, Steve.
I just wanted to briefly acknowledge, I mean, John and I had the privilege of making the presentation, but we had a lot of very bright and dedicated and passionate people doing that research. A lot, a lot of work went into that, and it wasn't us. You know, we had the privilege of making the presentation, but, and putting it together in a, something that you could bite on. But a lot of people, very bright and talented people, have produced this report, the basic report.
Yeah, and I'm very, you know, happy to receive that, and this is the kind of information that, you know, certainly I want, I know the members of the board want, going forward. So again, if a proposal comes forward, these are going to be the key issues that we're going to have to see how they get addressed.
But what I was leading to, Brian, was if you want to tap into that, that kind of research, okay, the board might consider a citizens' committee to help you in gathering the information and deliberating.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of talent out there. I was really, really surprised that...
Sure.
The talent out there.
Well, you know, again, that's why I extended the invitation, Ken, for this organization to come before the board, you know, to start this process, give us this kind of information, because this is the kind of stuff that I personally, as a selectman, am going to need to be able to make a responsible, informed decision. Because, you know, to perhaps deny the townspeople the right to vote is a right that I take very, very seriously. And if, in fact, I'm going to make that decision, I need to be convinced that it's the proper decision. So that's the process we're at. So I want to thank you very much. I know, you know, Ken had asked for 20 minutes.
We got, we got released twice that.
I gave you 55 minutes.
Thank you.
And I have no problem doing that. It's a very important issue. You've obviously spent a lot of time on this. People feel very passionately about it. I understand that. But I'd like to have all of you realize that what we're trying to do is the best job that we think we can for the town of Milford.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Is that it? And what you...
Good job.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
And you know what? I was like you, before I came to the meeting, I thought, oh, yes, we need a casino. And then after you said it, I was like, oh, they do.
Steve? Those sign-up, those sign-up sheets for Milford residents are going to be key, so make sure folks sign it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very well done.
How about you, too?
Okay.